So I've started the recording now and we will post it on our website.
Okay, great. This is, you know, dinging the gavel. Welcome to the April 13th. It's a new world meeting of the Utilities Commission. For the record, I have an ordinance that I'm looking at that amends Chapter Two entitled Administration to Allow Remote Participation. So we are actually legal in meeting Zoom-like. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Patrice to call the roll, which she will do so individually. And you have to say, "Present, please."
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to start with Randall Tuttle, Chairman.
Here, present.
Wesley Curtis, Vice Chair.
Present.
Harold Day.
Present.
Tom Griffin. Tom Griffin. Wes, present. Okay. Yvonne Hines.
Present.
Hugh Jernigan.
Present.
Dwayne Long.
Present.
Chris Parker.
Present.
James Ruffin. Donald Stewart.
Present.
And Alan Younger.
Present.
Okay, we're going to go back to Mr. Griffin. Are you present, Mr. Griffin?
Actually, I'm looking at the screen. It looks like he dropped off, but he will probably come back in. So Mike, maybe you can look after him.
He went to get his tie.
Okay, so our agenda today is sort of in two parts. We have a, the amendments, and then a six other items for a total of seven items that we will ask for an approval by consent agenda. And then we will go into a CIP discussion. So of the set of items on the agenda, are there any that any of the commission members would like to pull from the consent agenda and discuss individually? And please don't hesitate in doing so.
Move approval for the consent agenda.
Mr. Parker has moved approval. And was that Wesley second? Any discussion? I guess we can do this the same way. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Randall.
Oh, we can do that.
Yeah, so for, to approve the consent agenda, you actually need to read, you'll need to announce everybody's name, and they'll say yes or no.
And shall I do that? Or is Patrice going to do that?
No, you can do that. I think that, since you're the chairman, you need to do that for the items.
Okay, and Patrice, can we back up? And I see Mr. Griffin, so do you want to make sure he's present and accounted for?
Mr. Griffin, I just took the role. I just want to make sure you're available. You're here. Tom Griffin.
He's muted. So wave Tom if you can hear us.
He's frozen.
Okay.
I know.
Tom, is that Tom?
There he is.
He's near at a distance.
Okay, so we'll say it again. We will call him. Tom Griffin is here, present.
Okay.
I heard a present.
Okay.
Tom, we're getting ready to approve the consent agenda, and we've got a motion in a second. So I'm getting ready to call the roll for action on that, a consent agenda motion. Wesley Curtis.
Yay.
Harold Day.
Yes.
Tom Griffin.
Yes.
Yvonne Hines.
Aye.
Hugh Jernigan.
Aye.
Dwayne Long. Ms. Long.
One.
Yes.
I'm presuming I heard a yes. Chris Parker.
Yes.
Jim Ruffin.
Aye.
Donald Stewart.
Yes.
And Alan Younger.
Yeah.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Courtney, are we exiting this meeting and going into a discussion of CIP, or do we stay open?
We stay open, and the plan, we'll just adjourn at the end.
Got it. Okay, so I think I've done my job. I'm handing it back over to staff for the capital improvement projects discussion.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Just a couple of things that I want to, before we turn it over to CIP, I want to give everyone a brief update on what the city's doing as far as this COVID response. I've been sending out emails to try to keep you informed, but I'll give you a brief update right now. The city is in Level Three Response Plan, and that's three out of three for utilities. This means that all employees that can work from home are working from home. Non-essential employees that cannot work from home have been sent home with pay. And then, as you know, the majority of our employees are considered essential and can't work from home. They actually have to come in to their job site or their facility to work. So for those employees, they are receiving what we're calling premium pay. The essential employees that are coming into site, coming on site. And then they're working on an alternate schedule to limit exposure. So we have rotating shifts for those employees. Also want to let you know, you may have heard, but the federal government has instituted the Families First Coronavirus or Coronavirus Response Act, which requires that certain employers provide their employees with paid sick leave and expanded family medical leave for this pandemic. In addition to that, the city of Winston-Salem has also given each employee 15 days of city-paid leave. So the city is really taking care of their employees. And I wanted to let, make sure that you guys, that the Utility Commission knew that. Landfill and yard waste facilities are operating under normal hours. So just in case you get that question, we've, I've gotten that question a lot, so. And if there, are there any specific questions about what our operations, what's going on in our operations, or what's what we're doing? Okay.
Personally, personally, I think you've done a fabulous job. The meeting has been incredible. I was so, so impressed. I bragged on, the first thing I ever heard when this stuff came up was the doing away with the disconnects for non-payer. I mean, that just said, that just set the tone. And I think that's just a, everything has been done. It's been really thought out, well-planned, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. You're welcome. And as you know, the governor, you know, had an executive order mandating utilities to do that, but we were well ahead of that by a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Yeah, Courtney, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to make a couple of comments, sort of along the lines of, Mr. Jernigan, so good afternoon, Chairman Tuttle, members of the commission. Thank you for participating in this awkward yet effective way. You know, it's a new, it's a new way of doing business, probably for the midterm. I won't say it's short term. But I wanted to thank all of you for your support of staff in some of the policy decisions that you just ratified by approving the agenda, such as the waiving of the fees, the waiving of fees at the landfill for the yard waste. These may seem, you know, like small gestures, but in unprecedented times and at really uncertain times, the small things are what matter. And I wanted to recognize Courtney and the staff of the utility for really stepping up and being warriors on the battlefield. They didn't just plan, they took those plans, and then they prepared the staff. We did dry runs and run-throughs, and we figured out the best way to try and accomplish things. We threw the 100% correct goal out the window, which is appropriate in a crisis. And we've been shooting for 85% and exceeding that. So Courtney's leadership has been extraordinary. She has an extraordinary team behind her. And we have a board that supports the extraordinary leaders and performers in the department. So my gratitude is, I will never forget these days for the rest of my career, that's for sure. And I appreciate the board, and I certainly appreciate the staff for all of their efforts. Well done.
Damon, thank you for saying that. And I think I speak for everybody here. Thank you, Hugh, for leading us all. But I've talked to Courtney a number of times, and so I want to thank, echo Damon's comments, Courtney, and for your whole team.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And Damon knows how much I appreciate him as well. He's been great throughout all this, also, providing really good leadership and support, so. Okay, well, with that, I am going to share my screen real quick, so you can see the CIP presentation. And then I'll turn it over to Mike Coivisto, who will start us off.
Alrighty, Courtney, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Perfect.
Alrighty. So we're going to start by a little introduction here. Today, we're talking about our capital improvement program. And we're going to, let's see if I can get this slide to advance here. There we go. Here's our agenda. We're going to talk a little, do a little budget overview. Then Jan will go through the solid waste management project, and then Shang will talk about the water and wastewater projects. All right, so just to give you all some information on our timeline, we kick off our process in January with the City Budget Office. And then we work through January and into February to formulate our departmental requests. We send those to the Budget Office. Typically, in March, we do the capital improvement plan. We're doing that in April, as you can see here. And then a little bit later in the month, we'll have another Finance Committee meeting to talk about the operating budget and rate recommendations. Then in May, the Commission recommends the operating budget and capital budgets to the City Council and adopts rates for the next year. Then in June, the City Council adopts the budget and appropriates funding for a new fiscal year, which begins July 1st. Today, we're focusing primarily on the capital improvement plan, which includes all the individual capital projects and major studies for the utility in a six-year plan. Contains two parts, which, can everybody see my cursor here? The budget year, which is what we're asking you all to appropriate, which is the upcoming year's appropriation plan for FY '21. And then these subsequent years here, the planning years, is our plan for expenditures for those projects, and extends five years beyond the capital budget. And those are kind of our best guesses based on our planning as to what those potential budgets will look like in the future. So our capital, capital plan is funded by two primary sources. Pago, which is cash we have available to fund projects. And then we do some debt financing, which is bonds and state loans primarily. On the operating budget side, we, this is what we will be talking about a little bit later in April, that pays for our ongoing expenses, such as personnel, supplies, and services. We also make our debt service payments out of there for the bonds, state loans, and any equipment purchases that we've made. And those, the operating budgets are supported by revenues from fees. On the water and sewer side, volumetric and readiness-to-serve charges make up the majority of the revenues there. And on the solid waste disposal side, landfill tipping fees are the driver there. And just to reiterate, there are no property taxes or sales taxes that fund the water and sewer fund or the solid waste disposal fund. Any questions up to this point? Okay, just a few definitions to go through quickly. A budget is an estimate of income and expenditure for a set period of time. Appropriations are setting aside funds for a specific project. And a spend plan is a projected capital spending of funds over a six-year period. And so an example of that would be, here's a, here's a project that started on July, in July of 2016. In July 2016, we appropriated about $1.5 million for an evaluation study. We spent that out over the course of the next year, where we appropriated another $5.5 million for design of the project, which took another year. At that point, we were ready to put out the construction, the Construction Administration, at which time we appropriated an additional $55 million for the project. And that is, we must appropriate that full amount there to encumber funds for the purchase order, for the contractor. So for this project, you can see, it took us basically three and a half years to spend out that 55, that additional $55 million. So over the course of basically five and a half years, we spent $62 million for this project. It's kind of what we, how we appropriate the funds, then we spend them. That's what a typical project, one of our larger projects, looks like. Any questions there? All right, so what drives our capital plan projects typically? You have capacity, which is necessary to meet current or future demands. Compliance, where we're trying to meet regulatory and/or safety requirements. Condition is necessary to extend the useful life of an asset, and may include major rehabilitation or full replacement. Or efficiency, where we're trying to improve business processes, customer service, or enhance our revenues in some, in one way or another. Any questions on any of that? If not, I will turn it over to Jan to talk about the solid waste management projects.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, everyone. Quest, remote control.
Jan, before you start.
Right.
Just so everybody knows, if you, if you're muted and you have a question, you can raise your hand over there under Participants. You should see an option where you can raise your hand, or you can use the chat box. And Kyra's monitoring that if you have any questions to kind of make sure we don't miss anything, if anybody has anything they want to say.
Right. Thank you, Courtney. So I don't seem to be able to advance the slides.
Put your cursor into, like, click on it again and see if that works. There you go.
There. Thank you very much. So these are the solid waste projects that are active in this CIP window. As Mike said, we have, we're showing you the prior years appropriations, the upcoming budget year that you would be asked to approve in the May meeting, and then five years of planning, when, five planning years in the window. And the total's over on the right side of the table. So in this upcoming year, we only have one project for which we are requesting appropriations, and that is the Haynes landfill facility upgrades. We're requesting $1,676,060 for that project. And the total appropriations through FY '26 are $18,932,060. So the Haynes landfill gas system, last year we had no appropriations, and in the upcoming budget year, we also have none. That's because we have a remaining balance that will cover the cost of well installation that we need to do this year. In future years, FY '22 and '25, we'll have appropriations for a total of $750,000. And the Haynes landfill facility upgrades is the project for which we are requesting the 1.7 million. We asked for $750,000 last year, as you see, and that was primarily, that was for the upgrade of our maintenance facility at the landfill. And most of this 1.7 is also for that same project. We also need to upgrade some security and access controls. And the Leachate pumping system needs some components replaced and some pumps replaced. And there are improvements that we need to make to paving and drainage structures around the site. The mechanically stabilized earthen retaining wall project had $541,000 appropriated last year. There are no appropriations requested in the coming year, but you do see there are some pretty big numbers in the future that we would need to actually construct that wall. That's a, that's a project that would add capacity to the landfill without having to do a horizontal expansion, which would require a pretty major permit effort. This is the most recent aerial photograph of the site. So just to show you generally on the ground what we're talking about, we're filling right now within cell five, four and five, excuse me, which are kind of right here in the middle of the landfill. The green line shows you the proposed first portion of the retaining wall, which is scheduled tentatively for 2024 for construction. The pink line is the second part of that, which would be constructed in 2028. We can only build that after we build cell six up in this area. And the wells that we need to install are scattered throughout this area to enhance the performance of the gas system. And the maintenance facility is located here on the east side of the railroad tracks.
Hey, Jan.
Yes?
I think Mr. Jernigan may have been trying to say something.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Oh.
Were you trying to say something?
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to check. I had forgotten. How many cubic yards will that add to the MSC wall?
The cubic yards, let's see, the permitted capacity now is right at 12 million.
Yeah.
And the wall adds, I think, about 10% more, so 1.2. I can confirm that. We're still doing, it's still in the design phase, so we don't have a detailed.
I think I remember. I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I think I remember that now. It was about 1.2 million for the.
It is. It's over the 10% threshold that triggers a major permit amendment. So it could be a little more than that, but it's in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Sure. That's all the information that I had to report, so are there any more questions about these projects or anything else?
Hello?
Yes.
I had a question, Jan. The 541,000, is that all been for engineering and design and stuff, the prior?
Yes. That's correct. That was all for permitting and design work, engineering services. And also some geotechnical drilling that we had to do, but not any construction.
Okay.
Okay. Turn it over to Shang. Do you have control?
I'm sorry. Um, I don't think so.
Let me see. Nice work.
All right. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Shang Cho Huffman. It's good to see you all virtually. And I would be going over the water and wastewater CIP. This is the summary slide, similar to what Jan had, excuse me, showing the different projects or programs and the six-year planning window. For the upcoming budget year, we're requesting total appropriations of $38.5 million. We are requesting 1.5 million for asset management program and studies. This will help fund projects such as GIS asset collection and the water distribution system master plan update. We've started putting our master plans on a five-year cycle so that they get updated regularly. So after the water distribution system master plan, we'd probably ask you to update the collection system master plan in the following year, which is fiscal year 2022. Excuse me. Oh, sorry. All right, there we go. We would like to request 15 million for the collection system improvement program to help us reach our goal of less than two SSOs per 100 miles of sewer. This will help fund the CSIP year five, along with projects that came out of CSIP, such as Sprague Street SSES Plum and the Systemwide Sewer Rehab Base Three. For the L-H Basin, we would like to request 2.5 million in appropriations, which will help fund the capacity upgrade projects that were identified in the collection system master plan. This will also help us continue funding for the field verification, INI reduction, and construction projects in this basin. We are requesting 2.5 million to help with facility improvements. This will fund the miscellaneous improvements at UFO and the meter shop. This funding will also go towards helping us renovate the space that Utilities Admin is moving into at the Bryce H. Stewart Building. For lift stations, we are requesting 2.5 million to help with the upgrades that were identified in the collection system master plan. And also, this will help with the construction of the capacity upgrades at the Avaley, Martin Mill, and Lowery Street lift stations. Similar to the L-H Basin, excuse me, we would like to request $250,000 for the Muddy Creek Basin to help with the projects that were identified in the collection system master plan. We are requesting 2 million to help with the DOT utility relocation project. Excuse me. Not Corona, just to go in my throat. I apologize. The 2 million will go towards the projects that were identified. We're currently working in the Northern Beltway Eastern section, but there will be more projects identified at a later date. Similar to L-H and Muddy Basin, for the South Fork Basin, we would like to request 250,000 to help fund the upgrades identified in the wastewater collection system master plan and the field verification, INI reduction effort in this basin. For the water distribution system, we would like to request 10 million to help with the projects that were identified in the water distribution system master plan, such as the water service line renewal, valve condition assessment, and fresh air of cross-connection control inventory. This funding will also go towards the design and construction of the Tobin-Kernersville Water Main, amongst other projects. For the upcoming fiscal year, we're not asking for any appropriations for water tank rehab. The last of the 14 tanks to be rehabbed was 9th Street Tank. Thank you for approving that. We will start the cycle again and wake for, with the Wake Forest Water Tank in the fiscal year 2022. Water treatment plant rehab and upgrades, we are requesting 2 million to help with the miscellaneous replacement parts needed at the three water treatment plants. This funding will also go towards the implementation of the AWIA risk and resilience recommendations that will, we're doing the assessment currently, and there'll be recommendations coming out of it. This funding will also go towards the, to help with the repairs at the Northwest Raw Water Dam and intake. For the BioSolids Dryer Facility, we are requesting 1.5 million to help with the different recommendations that were identified in the wastewater facilities master plan. This funding will also go towards the implementation of the recommendations that were identified in the 652 Dust Hazard Analysis Study that was done in fiscal year 2019. For L-H Wastewater Treatment Plant, we are requesting 500,000 to help, to help fund the projects that were identified in the wastewater facilities master plan. Similar to L-H for Muddy Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, we are requesting 250,000 to help with the recommendations that were identified in the wastewater facilities master plan. For wastewater treatment plant expansion, nutrient removal, we are not asking for any appropriations at this time. This project is to cover, is to provide for nutrient removal treatment at both wastewater treatment plants when nutrient limits are issued by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. We just don't know what will happen, but we'd like to keep this one on the books. And that is all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Question.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Chris Parker. I was wondering about the AMI project.
I can take that, or Silver can, either one. So the AMI project has already been appropriated. I can't remember the exact amount. Maybe. I can't remember the exact amount, maybe around 50 million, where the budget had been appropriated in previous years. So it goes back to that example project where you've appropriated the funds, and we are now spending that money down.
Okay.
And I had. Correct. I think there was 50 million dollars appropriated for AMI.
And I had a question about the Nielsen water treatment, our, our project going, upcoming project there. Is any of that money appropriated for that? The Nielsen upgrade?
Yep. So that one's very similar to the, the advanced meter, metering project, where we've already appropriated those funds. And now we are trying to spend it, but we have, we had a bid opening where we had less than three bidders. So we couldn't open the bids. We, we rebid the, the project. This is for the Nielsen Water Treatment Plant upgrade. We opened those bids a second, or we had a second bid opening, and we're able to open those bids with only two bidders, I think, two weeks ago. The low bidder was a, Mike, what was that, 100 and some million?
Hundred and eight million, I believe.
So.
Which is about double our estimate.
So we are, we, we obviously rejected that bid, and we're kind of going back to the drawing board to see what we need to do, whether it's break the project up. You know, we've talked about that before. It's not our preference, wait till after things settle down to see maybe if we can get a more competitive cost. So that's where we're at on that one. But, but to answer your, your question is the, the funds have already been appropriated.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Courtney, on the same lines, maybe as both these questions, I'm looking at the handout that lists all the total appropriations that you sent in your email, I don't know, three, four, three, four days ago?
Yes.
So, so when I see that we are appropriating a total of 40.176 dollars for the budget year, that's only what we're acting on today? And if there are other appropriations that have been out there that are, I, I sort of thought we were covering all of them together.
Okay, so let me, I think I can answer your question. So first of all, we're just presenting the capital plan today. You don't, you're not voting on it. You'll vote on it at the May meeting. And what you vote on for this year will just be this current year appropriation. So it's that 41 million number. That's water sewer in solid waste. Does that answer your question, Randall? Mr. Tuttle?
I know. I'm fine. Well, no, because I sort of, the, the way I recall doing it in the past is even if we were not appropriating something new for AMI today, it was still on this list because we were, we had previously appropriated it, and we might not spend it until the year 22, 23.
It only shows up on the list if we need future appropriations. So we're showing, what we'll show on the, the planning window is the current year, and then if we were going to request anything in future years. If it's a project that we've already requested and you've already approved all the appropriations needed, it won't show back up. It will show in our spend plan, because we're still spending that money, which is something Lisa uses. And of course, it'll come back when you, when the commission approves individual contracts, but you won't see it on the budget request.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Courtney, why don't you unmute everybody, just in case there are questions?
Okay. Okay. I have unmuted everyone, so if you, if you have any questions, before we kind of move on to, to closing things, things out, let me know.
I wanted to ask earlier about the disconnects.
Yes.
Is there any retroactive tax going to be attached to the disconnects?
Um, meaning are we going to get money back for, for the, for the disconnects? Is that what you?
Basically.
Yeah. So everyone, so we, what we're doing now is we can't charge reconnection fees. We can't charge penalties. We can't charge interest for this time period that somebody is connected and not paying, you know? So we won't get those interest and fees back. They are going to, people are still encouraged to pay their bill, and that did not go away. So like, if somebody doesn't pay their bill this month and it's a hundred dollars, it's going to follow them. And then when we can start requiring them to pay and we can disconnect them, then at that point, you know, we'll get that, we'll eventually get the money, but we, right now, what we have to do is offer a payment plan, and we cannot disconnect, disconnect anybody for non-payment. Does that answer your question, Miss Science?
But will there be retroactive taxes?
No. I, I, yeah, so the answer would be no to that, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Will we get a mail out on this budget for next month?
Um, so you're talking about your May, for the May meeting?
Yes.
Yes. What we will, I'm assuming that we will have another virtual meeting in May. So I will do the same thing that I did for this meeting. We'll send you out the agenda and the CIP book. You know, normally you get a hard copy of the CIP book, and we'll email you out the PDF version of it before the May meeting.
Courtney, how about April 21st?
So that would, that was going to be my next point. We, our next scheduled meetings to present the operations budget is April 21st, and then we have the April 29th meeting as an if-needed meeting. What, um, what I would like to do is cancel the April 21st meeting and just use the April 29th meeting. Because with, with everything that's going on, what we presented to the budget office initially before this pandemic hit, we are having to take a harder look at that and adjust some of our, our requests. Staff is moving forward with a budget now that does not include a rate increase. And so that, that obviously impacts our initial budget request, and we have to reevaluate the numbers and, and the budget. So I would like to give us a little bit more time, and if it works for everybody, we can use the April 29th meeting in lieu of the 21st. If, if anybody, if that does not work for anybody, if you could let me know now. I think the meeting's scheduled right now at noon, but I would, we would do the same thing that we did today and just move it to one so it doesn't fall within the lunch hour.
You're going to provide lunch?
That's why I moved it out of the.
If you wear a tie, she'll provide lunch. There's that DoorDash from Utilities.
Drubhub.
Drubhub, Swyby. Swyby's local. You can get Swyby. We'll get it.
So is everybody good for April 29th? That's a Wednesday, and we would just have it starting at 1:00 instead of 12:00.
Yeah, it works for me.
Yes.
That's good for me.
So I think Patrice put that on everybody's calendar. So will she update and then send links and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Patrice. Oh, looks she's so fast.
Well, um, if there's not any other questions, we, that kind of concludes what we had to present. I know it was a little different than normal, but I think it went, went well overall.
So just, just to recap for everyone, so we're, we'll have another one of these meetings on the 29th, and instead of CIP, it will be operating budget for our various departments.
Yes.
And, and along with rate, either increases or suggestions or no increases, whatever comes forth. And that will be a finance committee meeting, but most people will attend if possible. And then we, then we'll have our normally scheduled meeting on May 11th. Location and technology to be determined. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any, any commissioners would like to, before we wrap up, any commissioners, would you like to bring anything to the floor or to the screen?
I would like to ask about our Muddy Creek upgrade, how it's coming. Is it about completed or?
Mike, you want to take that one?
Hasn't asked in a while.
It is not about completed. It keeps progressing. It's probably going to be, they're pushing for substantial completion, but their interpretation of substantial completion is different than ours. We want to make sure once flow is turned on to the facility, that, you know, that, that is a, you can't go back on that, you know what I mean? So we want to make sure everything's ready. We think there'll be substantially complete, you know, late summer, early fall, and hopefully wrapping up with the project later this year.
Dan Long, what happened?
Yes. Yeah.
Chris? Um, just so everybody knows, that this is for Scythe Creek Week, April 13th through the 20th, and it's being done virtually. So I'd encourage you to go to the ForsytheCreekWeek.org. And John Southern from Archie LH had a nice little video about all the things that we have to protect the water as we distribute it back into the Yakima River. So that was kind of a nice scene to watch.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. I was going to say the same thing, Courtney. Thank you, Chris, for pointing that out. I didn't see. Any, any other comments or suggestions or, or questions? Hearing none. Harold, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion.
To adjourn, and Mr. Long has a second. All those in favor, wave your hands and say aye. Everybody, thank you so much. This was probably the most effective 42 minutes we've ever had. Efficient, at least.
I think you're right.
Everybody, please stay safe, sound, smile, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, you too, Randall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thank y'all.
What are these three little buttons up here in the corner?
Oh, whoops. Huh. What was that, Mr. Stewart?
What are those three little buttons up here beside the mute?
So if you click on that, it gives, it gives you more options.
Okay.
It might give you an option to raise your hand, or, I get a little bit more options on mine because I, I'm the host, and so it gives me a little bit more, but.
Says mute by video. Okay, stop video, rename. So how do we get off of this safely?
So I can, I can remove, remove you from the meeting, or down at the bottom, it says, "In Meeting." Do you see it down to the?
Leave meeting?
Yeah. That's how you can do it.
And then it just safely takes you off of it?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, thanks for the meeting.
Thank you. Have a good one. Be safe.